Yep.
I'll wait for the word.
Now it's going.
All right, welcome everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. It's March second, twenty twenty, and it is six thirty one P M. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call. Councilmember Amryan.
Here.
Councilmember Gilman.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
And Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
All councilmembers present. Also at the table at my left is City Administrator Amy. I blanked on your name. Amy Newsom. On my right would be Ross Arneson. Ross is not going to be here this evening. So with that out of the way. And actually, I could introduce the office. I'm trying to think of names in the audience here. Gentlemen to the left.
Curtis Ling.
Curtis Ling. We have Chief Police.
John Patterson.
What is wrong with me? Chief Police John Patterson. And keep going here. Kurt and Kurt Mank from the Enterprise, Michael Kudrowski, and Bob Luth.
Bob.
All right. Welcome, everyone. The agenda is in front of you. Is there any changes or additions?
I have one addition.
One addition? Go ahead.
I would like to give a brief update on the ambulance dispatch issue and the bills.
And where would you like to put the?
New business.
New business? Okay, ambulance update under new business. Item number eleven. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Morgan to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Moving then to the consent agenda. Item number four. Consent agenda this evening involves the three issue or three items, I should say. They are approval of the bills, item B, February approval of February eighteenth, twenty twenty, City Council Minutes and item C. Approval of the February twentieth Arlington Gaylord Ambulance Trial Merger Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gilman, second by Councilmember Amryan to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. All right, moving down to item number five, addressing the council. Does anyone here this evening wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to item six announcements.
Presidential primary is tomorrow. I see a typo in here at seven A M. to eight P M., not eight A M. The Craft and Gift Expo is here March seventh. The blood drive is here March tenth. And the A's Vet Brunch is March twenty second, starting at eight A M.
Okay, any question on the announcements? Moving on to communications. Item A, discussion on liquor permit for the Bullard Hospitality Group. Michael Kudrowski. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening.
What do you have for us?
All right, so with the planned opening date of June twenty twenty, Chef Craig's new restaurant by the name of A-Town Tavern. They've applied for a liquor license with the city. Most licenses that we have in town are from July to June for their period. But however, they do have a planned opening to date of June. So in discussions with the Department of Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement. Cities have the ability to enforce licenses within their own means as through council. So I'm coming to you today. That we can have up to seven liquor licenses. This will be our fourth. They're shooting for the opening date of June. But proposing either a temporary license and then their rolling license like the other ones in town. Or what we could do, or what I propose would be a bit easier, would be to have their license roll from May to June instead. And they would just be prorated for that one extra month and then have the normal thirteen hundred dollar license, which renews annually, just be from May to June. So and research through the league and state statutes. Essentially, our code is the same as cities. And the same through League of Minnesota cities, which we most likely borrowed from that to have our city code from what I found in conversations with them. So bringing it to discussion to see if we can go ahead and prorate that one month and then have that rolling period be from May to June for their license instead of the July period.
So it's either.
So you're talking thirteen months, right?
Yeah, it would be.
A thirteen month license for this year?
Just for this year, correct. And then they would start their twelve month period once that is up.
When you said prorated, you.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say that makes sense.
Yep.
You're doing less paperwork instead of doing paperwork and then doing it again a month later.
A month later, yep.
And then as far as prorated, it's not really prorated. It's just hacking.
It's taking the thirteen hundred and then dividing that. So I got about a hundred and ten. So.
Another hundred and eight bucks.
Adding to the thirteen.
Yep.
For the license, one time license for this year.
Yep.
The extra month and then.
Mm-hmm.
And the state of Minnesota is okay with them having a thirteen month license? Or would it be better to have them running May first to April thirtieth of twenty twenty one?
That's what I'm proposing. They have.
Oh, that's what you're asking for? To just change, not to give them a thirteen month license, a twelve month license?
No, they have, um, this one would be a temporary one month and then the thirteen. So they would just have a different period compared to the other bars in town or the other liquor licenses. So it's.
Okay, so just to clarify.
Yeah.
All the other three.
Pardon my, yes.
All the other three that hold liquor license, it runs from June one.
July one.
July one through June thirty is our running schedule. But if they're opening.
July one to June thirty.
July is, correct. Yeah, they're, they're planning an opening in June. So they would do June one to July.
June one first. So they want to run June one through.
To June thirty.
No, they'd run June one through May thirty first, twenty twenty one. They'd have a different schedule than the others.
Thirty first. Correct.
But we could leave them on the same schedule and just both thirteen months the first time.
Right. The first.
I don't think you can do that.
The state codes has asked me twelve months.
It would be one year.
Has to be twelve months.
Has to be twelve months.
We can't give them a thirteen month license.
Okay, well then it's temporary for one month.
Well. I thought it made more sense to give them a temporary one for one month and have theirs come do the same time everybody else's does.
Yeah.
Right. And then we have everybody all on the same program, the same reset.
Yep, yep. There's just a different month compared to the other three, if that makes sense.
Well, if we do a temporary month.
For June.
For June and then start them with their regular liquor license with everybody else until I one.
On July first. Yep.
So the city council would have to prorate that to a twelfth of, because a temporary liquor license only runs for.
Which is, I've got a hundred and ten. About a hundred and ten bucks for that, yeah, that prorate of that one month deal.
So a hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, that's the way that I took how you explained it.
That's okay.
Two liquor license.
Oh, you sold me on that.
I had it written down here, but.
It's easy and clean.
So on the, on the handout, it would be the second to the last full paragraph described at the way at the bottom, second to the last full paragraph.
That prorated license one month for about a hundred and ten, then a full licensure, licensure to go seven one through six thirty. Is that the consensus of the council then?
So they'll have to have two applications.
Correct. I'll write up two applications, let them know, hey, there's, here's this one for this month.
That's easy.
And they're all ready to go on everything, and I already talked to Linnea about it, and they're on board. Because they're just requesting not to have to apply for a full year, even though they're using it one month. So they're asking for the permission of a one month and then the full year starting in May.
And then a full year.
Knock on wood, everything's gonna go and they're opening in June.
Actually, the full year will start in July then.
Yep.
Not in May. The one month would be for the month of June. The full one would be for the one year starting July first, going through June thirtieth.
July.
Same period. Correct.
Of, of twenty one.
Twenty one, yep.
Is everybody clear?
Yep.
Good.
Okay, all right, that's.
So we'll bring that back as an actual on the consent agenda.
Yep, yep.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Michael? Thank you. You can be heading north for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, you wanna continue on with the communication?
Yep. The next one is just, just an F Y I. for you that we received a certificate of membership in the rural. From the Minnesota Rural Water Association.
Okay.
It came to us, so I thought I'd stick it into your receipt.
Mm-hmm.
Was that based on that water runoff that we had, um, supported?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. No, this is not, not, no, this is not part of that. This has to do with our drinking water, the reports that come in.
No, no. No.
Oh.
In the city, yeah, yep.
Right. That's what this is. This is our drinking water.
Okay.
Doesn't cost us anything, just a membership that we received. For our safe drinking water.
Neat.
Okay, the Planning and Zoning Committee, we need, did you want us to review those or?
And this is just for your information, because the city council has struggled, the city of Arlington has struggled with lack of communication.
Okay.
So I would like to put every, all the minutes on in the council packets. And they don't necessarily need to be approved by city council. That's why I didn't put them on the consent agenda. And it's not that we have to go over them.
Right.
It's that you guys read them and everybody knows what's happening with all the different committees.
I appreciate that more than you know.
Yep.
Very much so.
Mm-huh.
Because it used to be the only ones that really had much clue at all were the committee members on that committee.
Right.
And the rest sometimes were a little bit in the dark.
Well, they'd hear about it during the little report.
Yeah, but you gotta, you just gotta tidbit of that.
Right.
Yeah, just, yep.
You couldn't take a half hour to go through.
Very recent.
Everything verbatim.
And these, these are approved minutes, so the planning and zoning approved these minutes.
And what I like about this is that if I have a question regarding the E D A. or the planning and zoning out of these minutes, I can bring it up here and we can have a discussion about it. And, and I think that's gonna be helpful to really know, get a handle on what's going on. I appreciate this a lot.
Right. Same thing with the E D A. The next one's the E D A. minutes. It is for you guys to read so that even though you two are on the E D A., the other three are not. They might not know what's going on.
Sometimes I don't know what's going on. I'm on the committee.
You can reread them back. Okay.
Board of Appeal?
This is from the county. I found it in my office when I started. So I wanted to get it on the agenda so that you know if it's April twenty third. This is for, um, it's the local Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting. It's the plan for April twenty third. Next month, the county will be here with their presentation on property.
Over the assessor?
Yep, I mean, the assessor will be here next month with their, and next meeting with their presentation, March sixteen. It'll be on the agenda. So I will probably put this on the agenda again or just as a, and just under the things to remember, the dates to remember, just so people know when it is.
Sure. Financial reports.
And in the past, the financial reports were typed up in that format that I presented at the last meeting. But actually through Banyan, I can run the revenue and expenditures so that you can see where we're sitting every month. I thought about running the February ones, but all the bills hadn't been paid, so it's not as accurate as you're seeing the January ones right now. So we're always gonna be a little behind. But I'd just like to include this in the packet too, not necessarily to go over even every month, but I think it's also been part of our communication issues. You didn't know what was happening with the numbers. And this way gives you guys a chance to read through the budget numbers each month and see. And if you have questions, you might have questions after looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
And you can ask myself or Lisa, and we can get answers.
I like the way this is laid out. It's very, yeah.
I do too. That's why I ran this. I'm like, I don't even have last time. It was these same numbers retyped into a spreadsheet. And I thought, why am I retyping these?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I can just print it off of Banyan and save myself the time or the possibility of typing in the wrong numbers when you're, you know.
Sure. Exactly. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
This way, it's just coming right out of Banyan and you can see revenue and expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
I think it'll help us when it comes to budgeting time too, to keep seeing the, these are the numbers we're gonna be working with, so you'll keep seeing where we sit.
Okay, any question from the council? Anything contained on the financial report? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Item eight, reports. Maintenance report, Kirby Weckworth, maintenance supervisor. Good evening, Kirby.
Good evening.
And also, we'll just include in your report or at the end of it, there, the bid for the sink.
Yeah, sure.
We just discuss that then too?
Yep. Okay. Um, yeah, basically, last month, we've been busy with the street lighting, getting that lined up and getting the main street completed last week. Um, I called them back up today because I saw there's a handful of acorn lighting that is not lit. And I suspect it's the same, they were finding that some of these were not wired the way they needed to be, so they had to rewire them for our downtown lighting. Because they don't operate off of photo eye cells. They're all tied in to a timer. And they had three different guys working on it, so I hope it's just a couple of wires that have to be flip flopped. So they'll be back this week to fix that. And we should be good to go downtown, and we've started already swapping some out in residential as well, and weather looks really nice, so hopefully we can keep on that. Other than that, a couple of big snowfalls that we took care of, a couple of small ones that Mike and I took care of in-house. Working on a truck bids to replace our pickup truck, pickup slash plow, plow truck, two thousand one Chevy. Wrapped up those sink bids for the kitchen, the prep sink bids. I think at my last report, I, I told you guys about FEMA, that we were told that pretty much wasn't worth going on anymore. There was a misunderstanding with that. There was two separate projects. The road damage side of everything, that was the project that got caboshed because it wasn't gonna be worth all the extra contingencies they threw at us. However, there is still one more project going, which is the, uh, the storm pipe collapse project. So there's seventeen grand potentially still coming our way for that without a lot of extra. He, I haven't been asked to supply anything else for that, so.
And where did that take place again? Where was the pipe collapse?
Oh, there was.
Or was it more than one?
Four or five different ones.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yep. Seventeen thousand dollars. The road damage was the big one. That was like forty thousand.
Yeah.
But we're only at maximum gonna get three thousand dollars back, and I've probably stuck that much time into it already, so. Anyways, so I guess that's, uh, better news than what we thought. Time of the year to get trimming some boulevard trees. Mike has been able to get at some of that. Now with weather, uh, getting better, hopefully we can do more of that. Our walk-in fridge here at the community center, uh, broke down last week. Luckily, we got that fixed before the fish fry. There was a bad cooling fan in it, and they added some refrigerant. Took down some bad parking lot signs uptown, some signs that didn't make sense for snow parking and seasonal parking. And then in talking with Amy, I ordered some, uh, new ones so everything can be consistent uptown and without a park. Yeah, that's pretty much what's been going on, so.
Okay, any questions of Kirby on those items before we get to the discussion about the sink?
I have a question. Have we gotten a letter from Mike yet?
It was, I, we must have. It was in the.
It was on the last, it was on the last council agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Paper.
With the date.
Yep.
Who, from Mike?
Whomson.
Whomson. Oh, yeah, yeah, Mike's res, resubvention. Retirement, yes, yes. Yep.
Retirement, mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? Well then, let's move into the bids on the, uh, on the sink, kitchen sink.
They all have the updated ones in front of them. I printed them all. They all have them in front of them. If you wanna walk us through.
They do, okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Sure, is there a copy? Sorry. Well, A and E Mechanical is obviously out. So it's between Reliable Plumbing and B and R. The drop in sink, which would just be cutting up, cutting into our existing countertop space.
On the left-hand side of the stove.
On the left-hand side of the grill and the, and the, um. So that, that's more costly for Reliable, um, eighty six fifty five. And then the prep table coffee maker is a couple hundred dollars less. Uh, B and R. is cheaper on both ends of it. The only warning I'm gonna give you guys is, is B and R Plumbing was not comfortable with doing the drop in sink at all because it, it included some welding, aluminum or stainless steel welding.
Stainless steel welding.
So that's the only one I'd worry about. Uh, other than that. In my mind, right away, it made more sense just to do the drop in sink because it's, we're not moving things around and adding electrical. But, uh, obviously, the cheapest would be B and R Plumbing at seventy nine thirty six for the prep table and the coffee maker, moving the coffee maker.
But Kirby, I don't see on the B and R Plumbing, um, you know, the reliable includes tile repair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't see that on, on B and R. Would that be an additional?
Theirs were, theirs were included in labor and materials.
So, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, as far as what would make sense for somebody coming in and renting it as a commercial kitchen? Would they prefer the sink in the drop sink area, or would they prefer the coffee maker actually moved and then having a prep table for, for that?
Yeah, and, and I talked that through pretty good with Reliable, because he does, seems to do a lot of kitchens up in the cities and stuff like that, restaurants. And the drop in sink location makes more sense. I mean, everything's kinda right there. There's more counter space if you just turn around. And then your dish line is just down, down the way. If, if we would put it where the coffee maker is, it's, it's by the hallway door and. I don't know. I. You could justify either way, I think, but.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
It, it just makes.
What makes more sense for?
It's funny to me to, to be moving things around and adding electrical when we don't need to and everything is good yet on that end, but, um.
Which is what you'd have to do if we go moving the coffee maker.
If we buy the table, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, yep.
And then you're tearing more wall apart and, um, Tuck and Hagen just gave me a rough estimate. He said five hundred bucks, but nobody's sure how much. Once they start tearing into things.
So do they have to open the, open the wall up to get what? Why are you?
They're gonna have to open the wall up to run some water lines.
Oh, water lines.
Also for electrical.
Yep. And then knock some, knock some floor out to get the drain.
And then they're gonna, yeah, right.
Do they know where that drain, drain line comes exactly? Where, did you find?
Reliable would, um, camera it to make sure beforehand.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think B and R was gonna do that. They're going off of somehow there was a ma, I don't know.
So they found plans.
At the beginning of this, they had an idea that it ran down the center of the floor, about ten feet from the wall.
Yeah. But Reliable was gonna televise it.
Yeah.
And camera it. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Might be a little smarter.
Yeah, before you start locking the floor up.
A lot smarter.
Yeah.
Well, when we get quotes like this, and here, I, I understand that anything can happen, but, I mean, that's their bid. So they're gonna get that job done for that amount of money, right? Um, even if something comes up, then they eat it, right?
Is it worded not to exceed?
Yeah, that would be the question.
Well, I would like to see it worded not to exceed, period.
Yeah, you just bid, so.
And, yeah.
But several of, a lot of contractors will, will put that in there.
Okay.
Yeah. And then.
I'd have to look at them again.
A lot of times, if they happen to come under, you will get billed slightly under, you know, no smut.
Yeah. No, I'd have to, I'd have to take a peek at those, I guess.
Did Reliable, I know they're five hundred bucks more, did they seem a little, I don't know how I wanna say this. Not more prepared, but more knowledgeable on the project than, my concerns are that we go with the cheapest one. And, well, we don't really know where the drain line is, but we'll find it when we break it up.
Yeah.
Well.
It was B and R.'s idea right away for the prep table. Reliable came in, then A and E Mechanical and said, we'll just do a drop in sink. And when I took this over, I thought, why are we moving things and all this other stuff? Why aren't we just cutting it into the sink and be done with it? But, uh, since we already had a bid from B and R. for coffee maker, that move. Um, I was asked to get bids for both, so.
Well, it's a eleven hundred dollars difference from the drop in sink from one to the other. Eleven seventy two difference.
Totally.
And, right, and five hundred on the other one if we're gonna move the coffee maker.
On the other, yeah.
But if we feel like we're just gonna do the drop in sink, because it makes more sense, because there's more countertop space. And it just makes more sense if you're gonna rent a kitchen that it works better there. I mean, I would say we need to look at the contract and make sure that the contract states no more than their, their bid, the seventy four eighty three. And then, I mean, that we're with B and R Plumbing.
And either location for the sink will, uh, meet state codes or state requirements?
Yep. Yep.
But you still have some reservations about B and R.'s welding of stainless steel?
Yes.
Which would be necessary with the drop in or with?
With the drop in, yeah.
With the drop in, okay.
And that weld is gonna be visible, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, Reliable's bid here doesn't have anything that says, it, it, it's a lot of, it, it's a bid, it's an estimate, it's speculative. There's nothing that says if we do this job and we find something, we're not gonna charge more. There's verbiage of could in here. Could be scoped with camera beforehand. Well, if they're gonna scope it, are they gonna charge for that? I'm, I'm all for getting it done right the first time, even if that costs a little bit more, but without surprises.
A little bit more firm on the bid process, or is this our guaranteed price and it's everything included?
Right. Right.
No charges afterwards, additional.
Because if, if you're vouching that they seem the most confident to get the job done, then let's get. Let's get them to say that we'll do it at this with hopes that it comes in at what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
Want me to make it bigger, Kirby? Do you wanna look at some?
I got it.
I mean, I, I would have to say that, I mean, did B and R. say that they're not competent in their welding? Did they flat out tell you that? Why did they bid the job then?
Because I asked for it to compare it, get a couple bids.
So then if their weld isn't that good, my question is, could we see their, can you put it back to theirs?
Well, I mean, honestly, if.
Well, they could subcontract that out to say O E M. or something if.
Well.
Yeah, we're, I'm excited to come in and build the welding.
Well, and, right, and I mean, I guess, you know, for us to accept the work that they did, right? We have to accept the work that they do when they complete it for us to pay them. They should probably know that the weld needs to be good, and if they can't do it, they need to find somebody else to do it. But, I mean, that's a, almost twelve hundred dollar savings from the other company.
But now, see, if we're, I'm looking at the B and R. here and says not responsible for bow or leaking because of stainless warping due to cutting hole for sink. I mean, there, there is a contract. There says that we'll pay just that to get that job.
They're already backed down.
And there's some contingencies in there that says what they're not gonna be liable for. And again, to Kirby's point, he doesn't, you don't feel confident in B and R.
Not for the drop in.
For the drop in.
Prep table would be fine.
But the prep table seems to be more.
No, it's doable.
I just, personally, I just don't like the location of that prep table, well, as opposed to the drop in.
I don't either. No, I didn't right away either, but.
By the doorway where people are coming in, going out, coming in, going out.
Yeah. Right, I think ultimately, we're trying to satisfy.
Yeah.
An OSHA requirement to, I mean, just to have. An OSHA requirement to, I mean, just to have a prep sink, there is that keep in mind, I don't know how much it would really get used. Uh, people have been using the kitchen without one, but it would get used, I'm sure, but I mean, I'm just saying, it's, that's another angle to think about.
And if the purpose is to try to generate revenue by renting this out.
Correct.
You also want it to function well as a kitchen, right, so if you're, if you're walking into a s- if you're walking into a table.
Mm-hmm. Well, if it'll, bird will get out, then it's not set up well.
That's, that doesn't help with the flow of kitchen work.
Yeah.
Do they make any mobile ones that maybe would have, like you would put fresh water in and it would have a spot that would capture the water to where you can then drain it out? So maybe we could just wheel it up, use it as needed?
I don't know that that would.
I don't know, I'm not sure if it.
Yeah, I don't think it would meet code, like standards.
I think it has to be tied into a line some.
Thing nice with the sink is it's there.
Yeah.
It's done.
Does it have to have a floor drain too?
No moving.
Yeah.
Permanent.
Yeah, it's gotta have a drain.
It then has to be permanent.
Yeah.
Well, if we do this, what, what are we gonna do in terms of advertising that we have a commercial kitchen, how how do we make this work then?
We have Henderson, the community school, we did, maybe unless they've found someplace else by now.
If we given. Maybe.
We have, we did put together a flyer a year or two ago before we found out that we couldn't rent it out. So there is something out there already, just needs to be updated with new contact information to market.
Would we consider ramping up the advertising that we have this commercial kitchen? Because if we don't do anything, nobody's gonna know that it's there and it's it's.
We have three thousand dollars in the community center marketing budget, we've spent some money on the Menkado bridal show we went to and we printed trifles. For that advertise the community center, it doesn't say anything about the kitchen in that trifold, but I only ordered two hundred and fifty. So we could order another batch and include advertising that we have a commercial kitchen available and how much the cost for the commercial kitchen is. And get those out there, we really need to get that information out.
And what's the cost of the commercial kitchen?
A hundred dollars a day, I believe, I haven't looked at that in a while, don't quote me on that.
That sounds right.
Does that sound right to you?
Yeah.
It's been a while since I've looked at it, but I think it's a hundred dollars a day, it's a discount if you rent it for, yeah.
But it discounted, you have.
For a period of time, yeah.
Yeah, a longer period of time like the.
School. So what are caterers doing right now? When they come in and they and they cater an event?
I guess they don't have, they're not, they're not preparing the food there, mm-hmm, they make it offsite and just bring them in.
They're making do.
They're making outside.
Who's dishing it up and serving it?
Mm-hmm, they're just dishing it and serving it.
Do you think that would continue to be the case? That, or do you think that they would use the kitchen, caterers?
I, we, we did have somebody inquire about a birthday party or something they were having here and they wanted to use the commercial kitchen. They wanted to bake the food in the kitchen for that event, but they can't yet because we're not a true commercial kitchen. But they were looking at it to, to do all the, all the cooking for the party.
So what what's the, what can we do in there legally right now?
Cause we put up just. You can, basically, they're using it as like glorified station where you're handing out your food.
Yeah, they're serving prepared food.
Yeah, you can serve from there.
Mm-hmm.
Little scratch.
But they can't cook in there like they would at the school or something, yeah.
The OSHA, scratch to finish product, we can't do that.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
I'm wondering if we could reach out to people who are in the cottage food industry.
Right, there's people that bake bread and those, whoever, if they would wanna use it for the commercial kitchen or pies, breads. And they would want to sell, if they wanna sell to the public, this would be a commercial kitchen they could utilize and then start a business. That's what some communities do, getting off track here, but some EDAs, uh, some EDAs actually control the commercial kitchen and rent it out. To kind of use it as an incubator space like we did downtown with, uh, Howard Brinkman's building. He doesn't wanna put a commercial kitchen in there because he doesn't wanna put a kitchen in that building to have those type of businesses, but we could. We could market this.
It would certainly help for a startup, yeah.
For a startup food, mm-hmm.
Well, and to the catering point, if you do have a kitchen that they can just bring all the prep to and then make it all there. That's probably easier by comparison than making it first and then transporting it.
Transporting.
Transporting it over there.
How many caterers come in here besides Chef Craig? Do we have one or two other ones, or is it mainly Chef Craig?
Oh, the, uh, that's the one I don't know.
I've seen Hahn's come in here from Winthrop.
Okay.
Okay.
Out there by two twelve, what's that?
I think it's Solder's, Hillcrest, Solder's.
Hillcrest, Hillcrest, yeah, that's one that I. Yeah, yep.
I mean, some of those places maybe wouldn't use it, like Hillcrest is probably frying their food there.
At their own restaurant and bringing it over.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming even if we did this, Chef Craig's gonna make his right across the street.
But I mean.
Right, he's not gonna be, he's not gonna use our kitchen.
Of course, yeah.
He's not gonna be using it. I'm trying to figure out how many people are gonna use this, before we spend eight grand.
Right, that's my point, yeah.
Is it, I understand we could maybe get some more, but at a hundred bucks a time, we gotta get eighty-six of them just to get our money back.
Is is there any way that we can reach out to Henderson schools and see if.
Yeah.
If they are still interested, if they.
Last time I reached, yeah, I reached out to him a couple of months ago, month ago, and then they said they were waiting to see what we did.
So I mean, I would say that, I mean, I, if if I were to get a commitment from them, I would go ahead with it.
A little more of a commitment from him?
In a heartbeat.
But if, but if we can't get a commitment from them, then I I don't, that's.
We gotta lock, we gotta lock the ovens up from what I'm hearing, so and.
They shouldn't be using it without.
Well, again, then we're just sitting with a dead kitchen that can't do anything, I mean.
Yeah, so I mean, I.
Then we're just sitting with a dead kitchen.
Yeah, so essentially, if we don't do it.
Correct.
All we can do is what we're doing now.
Right.
Then you can't use the kitchen.
We've gotta close the ovens off, they can't use them.
You shouldn't be using the kitchen.
I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to.
Why, you can't bring your stuff here and keep it in there?
You can heat it up.
You can heat it, reheat it, if you've cooked it somewhere else.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
You can reheat it here, you just can't start from scratch and go to finish.
Right, so.
You can't cook it from scratch.
Can't do that.
But you can keep it warm.
Where they can reheat, they can't physically cook the whole product, beginning to him.
Right, and I've seen that, I think people bring in sandwiches that they've reheated in our oven.
That's what, that's my only concern, I wonder.
Then I would say, yeah, it's not a very wise, it's potentially not a very good investment if, if we know that they're not going to.
No, I wanna, I wanna hear from.
A commitment from Henderson.
Henderson.
Okay, met from he- yeah, commitment from Henderson and a plan to actually advertise that so that we can generate some interest.
Yeah. Because if Henderson's inter- interested and we know they'll be here two, three years, we should recoup our, at least our expense.
Right. Could we also see how many times the kitchen was rented out over the last year, year and a half, whatever? As far as how, I mean, if we can get information, I don't know how, what kind of records we have, but.
I'm not sure if we have great records on how many times the kitchen was rented, I'll be honest, I might not have much more here, but.
Matt Nelson, you had something to say?
Yeah, there's, there's another marketing aspect to this that my family or my wife's family every year does cookie bake. A lot of people do their Christmas cookie bakes.
Hmm.
I know I'd spend a hundred bucks to have them come here instead of my house. You know, there there's, there.
But would forty people do it?
Do they get the space?
Exactly.
That's our concern, is it just the oven?
But it's a community kitchen to where.
You get the whole kitchen for a hundred bucks, but not.
Just, excuse me, Matt's talking.
Uh, there's, there's, there's another marketing aspect to it besides if you get the contract, so you mentioned Henderson and stuff. But there's people that have rented just to be able to have a larger kitchen than what they have at home.
Hmm, okay, good point.
And I actually know someone who is looking for an opportunity to teach people big batch cooking. So on a weekend, people come in, you have the ingredients available and everyone does big batch stuff that then is frozen for the entire week. So they already have, have food prepped, so that would be an option to reach out to that person and see if she'd be interested in doing that here.
Now, to Joe's point though, it's a hundred dollars just for the kitchen, how much for the room?
Correct. If you want, two hundred and forty dollars for the big one for room one, it's a hundred and eighty dollars, so if they wanna, but maybe they just wanna use the kitchen.
So.
Three and a.
Yeah.
At least they might wanna use the kitchen on the, yeah, it's a different story if they're gonna rent the kitchen and use the one of the rooms.
You won't want.
So an additional hundred and eighty to rent the room, so it'd be two hundred and eighty then for the one, the smallest.
Right.
Room one, mm-hmm. If they would rent the one by the kitchen, it's one eighty.
Right, the smallest segment there.
I was just kinda trying to clarify to make, you know, make sure it wasn't, you know, you paid a hundred and you got all of it, well, then that's really.
Mm-hmm. No, you don't get the whole works.
Yeah.
Just the kitchen over.
Just the kitchen for a hundred dollars.
But when you do get that kitchen up to code, then that also wraps into the marketing for the rooms, you're appealing to caterers.
Right.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
As well as those that wanna have events here, who then can also go to their caterer and say, the kitchen's all ready for you.
Mm-hmm.
You know, potentially, there's a, you can open it up to additional caterers that typically do not cater here as well.
Right, they could be from out of the area and they could actually use the kitchen.
Right.
What stand did the community center committee take on this? I'm trying to think back to a recent meeting, did they authorize it?
I left really early from that meeting.
Yeah, I I think I left right after you.
Yeah, I don't think we, fair questions, I mean, I don't think, I don't think that it was like authorized, it was discussed, uh.
Could we maybe wait until the next, you know, in the meantime, before the next community center meeting? If we don't wanna wait that long, though, maybe.
I I'd like to see the numbers, I mean, if we can see the numbers on.
Yeah. And get a commitment from Henderson hopefully?
Yeah.
And, yeah, talk to Henderson.
A commitment from Henderson.
Yeah. And tell them the commitment, you know, we're hinging on their commitment, either, we'd look more favorably upon it if they're willing to.
Mm-hmm.
I would've thought they would've made a move already on it as long as it was.
Well, they could have, we don't even know.
They might have now, chosen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and that, that would be investment wise, one of our biggest returns that we just lost.
But yet they had Hilltop Elementary School is where they were making it before, and that's, weren't they?
No, they were catered. No, their their meals were being catered by, um, the Bell Plain Restaurants.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, they're being catered, oh, okay.
Yeah, so I can't remember the name of the restaurant, but they were delivering food in.
Alright, alright.
And one of their goals is to be able to prepare more healthful meals for the students, which is why they're looking for kitchen space.
Good, good.
So they don't have a kitchen?
No, they have a kitchen, but you can't really prepare anything in it, it's not a commercial kitchen.
It's just like ours.
So they can serve, it's a doctor, right, they can serve prepared food, but they can't make food.
Well, like the.
Like ours.
Right. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll see if I can get a commitment, I know there's not gonna be a lot of information, I'll, we'll check it, but I I could tell ya, there won't be a lot of information on how many people rented the kitchen.
Don't we have, um, is this in part of our budget for the community center?
Yes, it was budgeted, it was in the budget to upgrade that sink, or to put a sink in.
For like what kind of money is?
Yeah, how much?
I I mean, was the budget less than?
If you have a minute, I can, probably.
If it was, if it was that much, then it's kind of a number.
It was like two thousand or something.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Just that, probably.
Yeah, I think it was that big.
No, it would.
Two, two, three thousand bucks brings about.
Yeah, that's what's coming to mind. Well, I think it was more than that, I think it was more than that budgeted, but. Three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three thousand was in the budget for it.
Okay.
So this over doubles it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is there other money available in the community center fund that's budgeted, that's not gonna be spent towards maybe, or that we can take away from one area to? I mean, if there's three thousand in advertising, I see, I mean, but we don't wanna take, if we're gonna do this, we don't wanna, we don't wanna take away the adverti-.
Mm-hmm.
We don't wanna take away that.
We gotta have.
We don't wanna take away from that.
Gonna take away that, that's just quick right now.
I know, right, so I mean, I'm just trying, I seen that really quick, I mean, I don't know if there's anything else.
It's not cheap.
Well, this one here, last year, um. Hold on, let me see if I can make this so you can see the whole. I'm looking at, uh. This safety program and equipment, in twenty eighteen, the actual was only seven eighty-five, and we budgeted three thousand.
It might be a couple thousand, right?
See what I'm, so there might be money here.
Um, but is sprinklers and such maybe, that thing, that's maybe gonna come out of that line?
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's coming to the. That's gonna be a big bill.
Maybe they.
Kirby, what was the number on sprinkler system replacement in here?
Uh, it's looking like it's probably twenty to thirty grand, something like that, somewhere between that.
Yep.
Would that have been part of the capital improvement budget?
I think we're looking for that next year, aren't we?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't this year.
That, that would be for next year.
It wasn't here, it was, it was right below that last one you looked at.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It said zinc breaker.
Whoop.
Go.
Hold on.
Six lines above the highlighted yellow.
Yep.
One column to the right.
Repair maintenance buildings.
Food prep sink.
Preparation sink, five thousand.
There's five thousand.
So we have eight thousand if he's got, cuz he has kitchen sink, we have kitchen sink and we have food prep sink.
Oh.
Remember the library?
Especially after.
Oh, yeah.
Problems.
It's like our sinks budgeted.
Gosh.
Looks like we do have the money for the sink, cuz it's in there twice.
Well, that being said, that.
Well, this is.
Well, now we do.
We still gotta do our legwork.
Can we still at least?
Yeah, but it's five grand in the twenty twenty budget.
It must, it must.
We're still a little short, but I mean, uh, seven hundred dollars.
A little short, but we're.
Not five hundred.
Not much.
Well, now with the B and R, B and R, we get her done.
That.
Yeah.
That's manageable.
True, B and R would be.
I mean, I don't know if they would be willing to, um, subcontract the welding to say OEM or something to. To maybe even the cutting of the hole and the welding to.
But that might drive their bid up then too.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, they they would've had, they would've had their hours in it, so they'd be taking away that to, to to give it to somebody else.
Course, that's sorta up to them to how they wanna get it, get it done, get it done to our satisfaction.
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
But if we've got eight thousand, Reliable's not far off of that, it sounds like Kirby's not pretty confident with that.
Right.
No, it's only six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
At least with Reliable, it's a one stop shop, but you got them coming in to do the job and it's.
Yeah.
And it's done.
Mm-hmm.
They got the people to do it correctly.
Right. But.
They were saying that if it's warped, it's our problem, I mean, silicone's gonna fill the gaps.
Or at least we think so. I mean, the sink, yeah, but that's.
Well, that was B and R's, that was saying that.
That was the.
Oh, I thought that.
Nope, that was B and R's, and and again, that's why Reliable's at least wasn't, didn't have verbiage that said, this is what we'll do, period.
You're saying that it's Reliable's. Yeah.
There's still some, there's still some terms in there that doesn't tell me that it's a firm. So, what are we, what are we talking here then, we still want commitment from Henderson?
Before moving forward.
Or at least some idea that they're still, we're still in the game, right?
That they're interested, right?
I think they're, I think they're long gone.
I I would.
So if they, I was gonna say, if I, if they, if I reach out to them and they say, hmm, we're not really interested anymore, do we want this back on the agenda or?
I think so, I, I would like to see in the bid that not to exceed. And if I can see that in the bid, then I would probably be comfortable with that reliable plumbing bid. But if I don't see that in there, then there, I mean. We're already going over seven hundred dollars over our budget, I don't wanna end up going.
Kirby, the items for tile repair, Jeff Matts, and wall repair, Tuck and Hagen knows there's, is that something you penciled in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so unless they are willing to say that's, we do it for that, not to exceed.
Yeah.
Well, you could, just throwing it out there, council could approve, approve it on the condition not to exceed eighty-six fifty-five. Kirby goes back to him and says, council approved it not to exceed eighty-six fifty-five, the city won't pay anything over that.
See, Tuck, Ten Hag and a Matts, they can't know what their bill's going to be until they see how much wall is damaged.
No. Yeah.
And how much tile has to be repaired, and they don't know until one of the two contractors has busted up the concrete or tile they're going to. And the holes in the walls, they could get in the wall and say, oh, we gotta go three feet further to get to something. Well, now we really increased the sheet rock repair.
We can.
Yeah.
But then what I would like to see is reliable come in and say, this is how much I'm gonna charge you regardless of what I do, period.
Yeah.
Yeah, so reliable could be the main contractor.
Right.
So the main contractor, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the biggest bulk of it too, right?
They would hire.
Yeah.
Right.
They're, they're the ones who are hiring whatever the other company.
Hire you.
Yes.
But I'm just saying, we can't tie Tuck and Hagen and a Matts to that five or six hundred.
That's, that's on them. Yep, but we're not paying Matts and we're not paying Tuck and Hagen, we're paying reliable for the job.
Yeah.
For the whole thing, if they're willing to.
And then they're subcontracting their other people.
Right.
But reliables, did the five hundred and six hundred, did reliable put that in or we determined to put that in?
Reliable.
They can break it up however.
No, no.
Break it up however.
We added that in as, as an additional city expense, correct?
So we would be paying reliable seventy-five fifty-five, right?
Right. Yeah.
They don't, they don't take care of things.
These two are separate, yeah. That's what I say, Tuck and Hagen and Matts, if they're over, we aren't going to reliable for that.
Yeah.
I think, I think what Michelle was referring to is that we approach reliable and say, hey, look, we want you to head the whole project. These were the two other contractors that I had bid it. Whether you choose to do that with them or not, I have approved eighty-six fifty-five to do this project. If you can get it done for that, then we move forward, you head the project up. Then, then you're not working with three different contractors, they are.
We're not, yeah. We're not paying Tuck and Hagen, we're not paying Matts, we're not paying anybody else, we're paying one contractor to do the project.
Exactly.
And they would, they would take full responsibility then?
And they, yeah, and whoever they get, I mean, maybe they don't get Tuck and Hagen, maybe they get somebody else, I don't know, maybe they use them, I don't know, I don't care who they use, just as long as the price comes.
Yeah.
And the job is.
It's acceptable, the job is acceptable, period.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying too, it's to keep.
They have the biggest share of it, yeah.
Right.
His initial bid said that um. The wall and tile repair, I mean, he didn't include that, like, that was gonna be on us to figure that out. But now you want me to go back and tell him to add that in or, or whatever?
Well, not, does he have, does he have con, like, does reliable use contractors for those types of jobs? And if so, would they also be in that eleven hundred dollar range for both?
I would assume so, but I don't know, he didn't include that in the first one, but. I mean. Well, we gotta figure out first and foremost if, if we're even gonna do it.
Well, we do have s- some budgeter, some, some budget for it, um. So we basically set that money aside to do it. The return on it is maybe negotiable, whether or not it's actually there or not, but.
Might be yours before you.
Yeah, uh, it's probably just the right thing to do, um, to move on and enjoy our commercial kitchen for what it is.
Just the truth, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would have, you know, I'm somewhat skeptical about whether or not people would actually be cooking in there or not, and how do you control that, right?
We can't.
Well, oh, no, no, that's wrong, you can only warm, you know, how do you, how do you separate that, um?
But it does give us more options, you know, if it's in there and we've got the money in the budget, it does give us more options, but.
It does give us more marketing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I like the idea of putting it in, since we have money in the budget for it, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I just want it to be simple, I, 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 and I don't wanna go over, I don't want any surprises, right?
Since you have two spaces.
Mm-hmm. Well, and I wanna know that we're actually going to advertise it and not just sit on it, because if we do all of this and then we just sit on it, what was the point?
Right.
You know, if we can somehow drum up additional business, then in my mind, it's, it's more worth it.
I, I think if. Either one of these contractors, either reliable or B and R Plumbing, take on the whole project, that might, you know, encourage them maybe to be very careful when they.
Knock it out, yeah, they come in and.
Knock it out. Right, because if they just are like, whatever, and then the rest of it's on, yeah, the rest of it's on u- us.
Yeah, we're not responsible.
Not saying that they would do that, I'm just saying things happen though.
You know, we're at a point where we either make a decision to move ahead with one or the other of the two bids, or table it and wait for some more facts. Background to make our decision at next meeting.
I'd really like to table it and let's get more information. I.
Did you make that into motion?
I'll make it into a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Haddelsted, second by council member Gilman, to table the decision on the um prep sink, or I should say the um uh. Sink improvement in the community center kitchen. And I would think until next meeting would be sufficient, but we're tabling it anyhow.
And I will check with the Henderson school, see if they still want it, let them know what the situation, and check on, see if I can get any information on past rentals. Kirby is to contact the contractor and see if he can get it basically set in stone not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed, I think that's the way the council would prefer it.
For the complete.
For the complete job.
So not, not to exceed on his price though, or the eighty-six fifty-five?
Complete job.
No, the.
On the total.
The total of eighty-six fifty-five.
Eighty-six fifty-five.
Okay.
So they would be the contractor for the mother, they would sub out to whoever they want to for the mother two pieces.
Yeah, they would contract with. But we pay one.
But we pay one person, not to exceed.
On the Henderson thing, not to drag this out, would anybody support sort of a negotiation tactic to try to uh get them, maybe we gave them, if they signed a contract for three months, we give them. You know, two, three weeks free essentially to get started.
Hmm.
I think when we did speak with them, we kinda left it open that we would negotiate with them on the price, if they would do it longer, so.
See that's.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor to table this, uh, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries and the item is tabled to the next meeting. Anything else for Kirby? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty, resolution authorizing submittal of the USDA Rural Development Community Facility Grant, that is a long title.
Sorry, that's what it is.
Yep.
Uh, this is for the fire department turnout gear, uh, John Hunt spoke about this, this needs to be replaced this year and they don't have a choice, it has to be replaced every, I think it's.
Ten.
Ten years. Does it say ten years? It's sticking in my mind, John told us, a certain number of years, and ha, so we have to pay to replace this.
Ten. Ten or fifteen.
It is a rip. Yeah.
That's why we, I heard about this grant, we might as well apply for it. It sounds like if we apply, we'll get something, not necessarily the amount I am asking for. But knowing if we put it closer to a fifty fifty split, hopefully we'll get the amount I'm asking for. But something is better than nothing towards paying for this turnout here.
Very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
I'll introduce resolution fifteen twenty dash, uh, or fifteen dash twenty twenty, authorizing a submittal for the USDA Rural Development Grant Pre-Application.
Second.
Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty introduced by council member Batchra, second by council member Haddelsted, and that resolution is authorizing a submittal for the USDA Rural Development Grant Pre-Pre-Application. That's for the turnout gear for the Arlington Fire Department. Is there further discussion?
Turnout gear is every ten year replacement.
Ten year, okay, I know it was in there somewhere, yeah.
Ten years, you're right, I was gonna say it's stuck in.
Yep. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Batchra.
Yes.
Council member Amright.
Yes.
Council member Haddelsted.
Yes.
And council member Gilman.
Yes.
All council members in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. All right, then on to item eleven, ambulance meeting update or ambulance program update.
There's been a lot of, I've heard a lot of concern about the dispatching issues with the ambulance. This weekend I spoke to the Sibley County Sheriff about the dispatching issues. And he told me that a day or two before we spoke this weekend, he had spoken with Dale Roddy about using what's called the fire EMS channel that was available for use. Dale Roddy would, said that he would bring it to the Ridgeview group to discuss on March tenth, that's a Ridgeview internal meeting, none of us will be there, the sheriff's office will not be there. Some of the concern with just using the Ridgeview channel, why the sheriff's office doesn't necessarily wanna get on there? Because you can hear all the chitter chatter and traffic from Lesur and Bell Plain, and the sheriff's office doesn't necessarily wanna hear all that. Also, there's been issues with transporting when Ridgeview goes to transport somebody, they keep sending out pages till someone answers it for a transport. So that's the update on dispatching after talking to the sheriff's office.
Is it not an option to go back to how we had been dis- dispatching? I think that's the.
I, yeah, I would like to recommend that we have Sibley County Dispatch.
If we're going.
How it was, and then just, I understand that. We have, it's complex schedule now, we don't know who's on, when they're on, well, we kinda do, but sometimes we don't know, you know, five minutes before. But it'll be either everybody in the ambulance group gets the page, no matter what city you live in, no matter what city that's coming out of. To make it easier on Sibley County for them to even think about taking it back, right?
Well, the sheriff's office won't do the dispatching for transport like they want it to happen now, because the sheriff's office won't take the time to keep sending out that dispatch. Trying to find someone who's available to do the transport.
So the old way is not an option?
Not an option right now, at least that's what I understood.
That's the slight thing.
Mm-hmm, it's not an option right now, under this joint agreement. While we're doing this joint agreement, it's not gonna work.
Now, is someone from Dispatch coming to the next JPA meeting so that they can explain their thinking on this to the, to the group?
You mean from the Dispatch that is being used right now?
Well, someone from Sibley County, from the sheriff's office.
From Sibley County?
Yeah. We can invite them to the March nineteen.
I think it would be helpful for them to be able to explain that.
Well, I guess I don't understand why we can't just go ahead and have them dispatch how they did before.
Exactly.
I mean, period.
We dispatched before, there was, there was transfers, I mean, that's how the ambulance is making money is because of the transfers, so clearly in the past we have dispatched.
Obviously.
Now, maybe it's a fear of doing a bigger area or something, I don't know.
But they did both before.
Yeah.
So they, they did Gaylord and they did Arlington ambulance before, okay, so the difference is?
Bob actually knows something about that.
Inform us, Bob.
Yeah, Bob Lewis, Arlington Ambulance, um, the reason we can't go back to the way it was before is because. Gaylord's pagers are set up differently than Arlington's, um, so, um. A lot of these issues that have Amy has brought up, Ridgeview uh has been working on. The transfer paging system they use by text, uh, they send out a text, all texts to both communities or both services. And they reply back to Ridgeview saying, yes, you know, I can take this, or no, I can't. So as soon as they get two people who say they can take this transfer beyond the thirty mile limit that we have. Then those two people are taking that transfer. Um, if it is something, a transfer that can wait longer than thirty minutes. I believe Ridgeview will send a truck out of their core, which would be their main service area, down to take that transfer. So, um, there's a.
Question, so with that being said, are we losing transfers then? Are, is Ridgeview taking transfers when we could potentially take those transfers?
If we can get the crews, yes.
But Gaylord is choosing not to do.
But.
That's not what I'm.
But Gaylord, Gaylord is choosing not to take transfers that would last.
They're there.
Say, if the transfer had to go to Abbott, Hennepin, North, uh, a Gaylord crew. On-call crew would not take that transfer.
How do, how do they get to say that? I mean, if it's a joint venture, you sign up as a, as a group and you fully partake in all aspects of it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, those are issues we're, you know, we're trying to deal with.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, from the fire department, um, you know, they're on site on, on maybe an accident or something and. You know, that communication is, is just so important, um, they're, they're the other part of this scenario, um.
And we have SB channels that we can talk to the fire department on, on an accident scene, and we do use an SB channel. Which is another, it's on everybody's radio, that's what we use to talk to fire. You know, the whole paging issue, um. Fire and ambulance are separate.
So the, the scenario that, um, I don't, I don't remember the gentleman that had brought it up, but they, there was two of them that actually had, had basically said they can. They hear the nine one one caller talking to the, you know, um, sometimes the person who called, or, you know, there, there was. There was instances where they, they just don't know whether or not, where's the truck coming from, where's, you know, where's the ambulance, uh, when's it gonna be here? Um, that was repeated over and over again, um.
For, I'm, I guess I don't understand.
For fire.
For fire, yeah, so for, for fire, uh, responding and, and waiting for an ambulance and not knowing when it was actually gonna be there.
For fire. So. Fire, fire on. If it's a motor vehicle, fire, there are some instances, and Sibley County has been very lax in a lot of these. But there are certain instances where fire and ambulance are to be auto-paged. Motor vehicle accidents, cardiacs, strokes, um, one other one, but those are the, the times when fire and ambulance gets paged simultaneously. Okay, otherwise, if it's a regular nine one one call for the ambulance, fire does not get paged. So the ambulance is the only group that's responding, now if ambulance gets on site and realizes or understands that. They need fire's assistance for something, then the ambulance would get on the Sibley County Fire EMS channel. Tell Dispatch that please page Arlington Fire to respond to this address and this call. That's how we have it set up, and that's how it's been for years in the past, is, you know. If the ambulance needs fire, they will get ahold of Sibley County and have them page fire.
Is, is that working the same now or not?
Yes. We, we haven't, we haven't had to use fire since we've started this trial period in January.
So what's? So what's changed? I.
That Ridgeview, Ridgeview is doing our dispatch, when a nine one one call comes into Sibley County Dispatch. That call gets transferred to Ridgeview's dispatchers in Waconia. One of the dispatchers will take the nine one one call and talk to the person on the other end who, who called in. They will do what they call a pre-arrival, they will talk to this person, get all the information that is needed. If there are any, anything that needs to be done, say, um, if it's someone who is in cardiac arrest or bleeding. They will instruct that person or ask them, are they willing to do CPR on this person, and they will give them instructions on how to do that. In the meantime, the other person working in that room will, will page either Arlington or Gaylord. Either two seventy or three seventy to respond to such and such address for, say, a cardiac. And if it is a cardiac, they will say, pre-arrival is in progress, which tells us that someone is still talking to the person who called nine one one. When the ambulance people get down to the garage, they call in Raleigh. At that time, the dispatcher will tell them what they have, where they have it at, and any additional information that they have gleaned from the person. In between the original page and when they got down to the truck. That is something we are not getting now with Sibley County. The majority of our calls, when we get them to go out, are either unknown medical or, you know, person bleeding or. You know, I'd say a good seventy percent of our calls prior to Ridgeview taking over the dispatching, we never knew what we were going into. So, um, that's how it's set up, so the deal with fire saying they're concerned about what they're going to. You know, they're not getting.
Or whe- or whether or not a, a truck is coming, when it's gonna be there, um. We stood in front of them for an hour and at the end of, and at the end of it, um, the number one thing and what would alleviate, in my opinion. Um, ninety-five percent of, um, the disconnect between this potent, you know, this JPA. Was, was going back to the original way that the dispatch was done, um.
Or finding a solution so that the communication was in, so I think either of those options would be.
Or find, no.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm, I'm, I'm confused a little bit as to where, why they, where they're getting this, where this truck is coming from and. Why are they being paged, you know, before us?
So in, a couple of those scenarios, they were already there, um, and had radioed back and basically didn't get much of response, they didn't know. Whether the truck was on its way, what, you know, what town is it in, um, when's it actually gonna be there?
There was. There was one instance before we started this trial period that we run into a situation like that, but not since.
Chief Patterson, did you have something you wanted to interject?
The. Feedback was.
If I could, Bob, sorry to interrupt, but, um, in addition to what Bob just explained, when that nine one one call comes in, and we just had one today.
Yes.
Uh, Sibley County Dispatch also gets on the radio and they dispatch a local law enforcement to the medicals, and they would do the same if it was a fire. So what'll happen is nine one one comes in, Sibley answers it, Sibley County to three hundred cars, which was Arlington. We got a medical at eight oh three West Main Street, that way I know, respond.
Mm-hmm.
Then the next thing that happens is Ridgeview gets it, and then what Bob explained. So we do get paged out by Sibley County, and that was a request from myself and, uh, the chief from Gaylord. As this JPA came into effect, the dispatch changed, so Sibley County is more than willing to try and adjust, um, to make this. A little bit more successful, but it has been a huge benefit for Ridgeview being able to get those details. Cause then we can also monitor Ridgeview, they can talk on the fire EMS channel, and they can also let us know if. Cause then we can also monitor Ridgeview, they can talk on the fire EMS channel, and they can also let us know if there's anything further that we might need to know.
So it sounds like there are solutions and this can be potentially workable for everyone. But it also sounds like it would really be a benefit for all of you who know this stuff to sit down with each other and get it figured out instead of telling us, you know.
Yeah, yeah. We appreciate your telling us, but we aren't the people that can solve the problem.
Yeah, I gotta believe there's a solution to this. If they're letting the police, there's gotta be a solution to make.
It sounds like Ridgeview is the better dispatcher at this point. Is that accurate? Better than Sibley County?
Yes, cause they're all trained emergency medical dispatchers where Sibley County is not.
Okay.
But we need to make fire, make this work for fire too.
So. Right.
So if they get this other channel, everything should be fine, or not?
So, and that's what the, so once the J P A goes, if it goes through or whatever, okay, Ridgeview can reprogram the fires.
Fire would have.
Right, and but that would cost.
There's a cost.
There's a cost.
A thousand dollars or something like that to have those programs.
It's a pretty heavy cost.
What I had heard was that it was already reprogrammed somehow, no?
Fires were not ours, haven't. Ambulance hasn't.
Yours.
Ambulance was. So fire has not, so it would be an additional cost to have fire. Be programmed and then once fire is programmed, then they'll get that communication from, from.
But you'll also hear that chatter from the sewer.
From the sewer, about plane.
And that's what fire doesn't want.
Well, the sheriff's office didn't want that either.
Well, they, I mean, again, the feedback was they had something done to them that they did not want nor like the way that it's happening. So when you have that had happened to you, you're not as open to, you know, the whole tester scenario. So coming together, coming up with something that, that fits, um, everyone is, is in the best of. Everybody would help the.
No, fire dispatching hasn't changed. It's the ambulance side of it.
There, I think there was twenty-five people in the room and it was, again, it was the number one topic. And so way I expressed, explained it to them was that the night before, that ambulance was one hundred percent, the folks that were here. Were on board with this J P A. I think it was the very next day, we go to the ambulance and it was just the opposite.
You go to the fire.
Fire, sorry, fire. We go to the fire. Other than may, I think there was two individuals that are actually on the ambulance and very thankful that they were. Because they did bring up some very valid, you know, um, information and, and, and shared that with, you know, their co. Co-firefighters, um, but, um, yeah, it's, it's, they feel very, they had. They felt very strongly that, that that was, that was the case, that was the obvious case.
But they're not, they're not, so their, their concern is they're not getting the ambulance pages.
They're not able to hear what's going on over the radio.
They feel like communication is compromised.
Turn on the, you, I mean, is, do we have it or is there something more?
Joe's doing a pretty good job. I'm not here to represent the fire department, but mine information from the meeting, other than what Joe's already shared.
No, I know.
Is that when the fire department is at scene, we do not know when the ambulance is getting there.
Okay.
We have no communication with Ridgeview on when they're coming.
Okay, then we need, then we need at that time, when it's a joint, uh, venture like that. We need both ambulance and fire need to talk to Sibley County and set up the S B channel that we can talk to each other on.
Yep, that's what the discussion is.
And then you could let them know when you're in route. It's that, it's that simple.
And then we can let them know, we can, we can, we can talk to them, they can talk to us. We do it with Green Isle when we respond over Green Isle. They give us an S B channel, we switch to that S B channel. And then we can talk to Green Isle Fire, Green Isle Fire can talk to us. It's the same thing that could be done.
That alleviates that chatter.
With, with that chatter.
And that eliminates that.
Dispatcher isn't relaying that information because it's going through Ridgeview.
To date, right?
To date, right.
But that can come from our ambulance service to our fire department, eliminate the chatter and eliminate them out of the situation, at least that part of it.
So this sounds like something that Sarah and John and John can all come together and figure out a plan and disseminate it to various groups, right?
Really. Affirmative.
I think so, yes.
I think so.
Well, just a reminder, Bridgeview's gonna meet on March tenth to talk about using this fire EMS channel.
Our, that's.
What's that?
A week from today.
A week from today and that's at our monthly ambulance meeting. Daryl is coming down to discuss this whole dispatching thing.
This other, correct, so.
So is it talking about the S B channel and how to use it or is it?
No, talking about a different, it's called the fire EMS channel.
The, the, it's the Sibley County channel. It's what, basically what, what that channel is, is how can we use the. Old channel through Sibley County without going through Ridgeview Dispatch.
So changing it, so taking it, so then reprogramming all your radios.
Yes. Well, we don't know, I mean, it's, you know, we're gonna have to look at this and.
Yeah, it's just important to get, to get that, to get the buy-in or have, have the folks that are affected by it.
There.
There and, and able to, you know, discuss the pros and cons and, you know, if John was there and, and as the chief on the, on the fire. Um, you know, if it's something he supports, then he can go back to his team and, and talk and. You know, his input to the fire department is more valuable than anybody, anybody's in this room.
Absolutely.
Um, and it would be a game changer towards, you know, if the J P A is a success. Um, in the end, and it ended up going that way, um, having everybody supportive of it would be better in the end. Well, it's the only way it's gonna work.
And it sounds like the only way that it's gonna get supported is if there is efficient communication between all parties involved during calls. Not necessarily now when we're trying to decide. It's, it's when it's happening is where the miscommunication lies. Cause fire doesn't know if an ambulance is coming when they're on site. But if we can get Ridgeview to communicate to Sibley or if we can get a channel. Between ambulance and fire after Ridgeview's done their part to dispatch ambulance. So then ambulance can talk to fire and say, we're on our way. That's, that's it, right?
Sounds like the key.
So.
Because I think we somewhat agree that it's beneficial to have the quality of dispatching out of Ridgeview that we're getting with two people, both know medical. They can talk people through things and keep everybody.
And that'll also alleviate fire from getting on that Ridgeview channel and hearing the chatter then, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's what we do.
That's what we do, yeah.
To resolve our issue.
Should, yeah, and, and I know it, it had been discussed a while back when we, in one of. Well, I'd say November-ish, we talked a little bit about the radio, you know, and how with, would. Ridgeview be doing our dispatcher, would it be coming out of Sibley County? And it was all kind of hinged, you know. On how we're gonna talk to each other on what Sibley County said and being they said they didn't wanna dispatch. You know, for the, the proposed J P A, well, then we went, the role we did. And, you know, the S B channel was discussed at that time.
But it hasn't been utilized.
It hasn't because we've really haven't had to. Because there hasn't been any calls where fire and ambulance have been dispatched at the same time due to things.
Since, since the J P A started.
Since the beginning of the year, yeah.
Since the beginning of January, since the beginning of the year.
But sooner or later, there probably will be one made.
Yeah, and so.
Yeah, I mean, there are benefits to have a plan in place, you know, know exactly what is happening, when it's happening, right?
Right, well, I mean, the true test will come yet. Yeah, yeah. As I say, sooner or later, it's gonna happen. Maybe six months, maybe nine.
Right. Right.
Well, and if, if that's the plan, that's the plan and then we roll with it or whatever, then that's better, whatever, right?
Yep. We just gotta go through and get that figured out.
If it works, but maybe, maybe testing it. I mean, you guys get, everybody gets test pagers or whatever every, every night.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it starts with a conversation, right?
Well, right, and then testing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then testing, to be prepared for that one time when it, when it does happen.
And testing to see if it works. Right. Yeah.
It's, yeah, there's, there's really nothing with the pagers or anything that we can test with that. It's all on the radio. So it's, it's a matter of, um, setting up a protocol where if Sibley County dispatches. Either two seventy or three seventy for either, you know, and a, and Arlington Fire and Gaylord Fire are involved. You know, it's at night in Gaylord, then two seventy and Gaylord Fire would be dispatched. And Sibley County, and we can, I, we can talk to Daryl. Sibley County would have to let Ridgeview know that. You know, Gaylord Fire has been dispatched and, you know, they can talk to, you know, each other on an S B channel. So they can, so Sibley County can open up that S B channel for everybody to talk to.
Well, and you guys do, I mean, I know that there's mock drills that are going on all the time. I mean, fire department's training, the ambulance is training.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, during, during one of these trainings, it would be perfect time to implement a situation. To make it happen and see how it works, or maybe it doesn't work, but then you'd find out if it's working or not. And if that's the solution or if we have to look into it deeper or something like that, so.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, we will move on. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
I have more on the ambulance, having to do with the bills.
Go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
At the end of last week, Lori D. from Gaylord reached out to our Lisa about the bills. And I talked to Lisa on Friday about the bills for the ambulance under the J P A. And she informed me that the money that we, that comes in from calls is coming into us electronically. It's set up through electronic funds transfer coming to the city of Arlington. It'd be very difficult to change that over to Gaylord if the J P A doesn't work and to change it back over to Arlington to make sure we get our money. And then she'd already paid the bills. She'd already paid the bills. So the bills have been paid so far.
Okay, it's been for January?
Yep, for January, the bills have all been paid. But then she highlighted for me the difference, yellow is what she paid that since the J P A.
Yeah.
And pay she had questions about because some of these are not just our ambulance. How is she supposed to split up MediaCom? Verizon, utilities for the city, Center Point Energy, gas bills. Because it's for that building, how do you split that up? And she said, okay, then how, how do I get it over to them? How, how are we gonna do this? It wasn't planned in advance. She said, in theory, it might've sounded like a good idea to have Gaylord handle all the bills. But in reality, when it came down to her paying the bills, it's easier if she just pays them than to try to get them over to Gaylord. And we could reconcile at the end. That's what Lisa and I said, why we could just reconcile at the end.
Reconcile at the end of the six months.
Makes sense.
So Lisa was never consulted on this in the planning stage?
Yeah, she said she went to one meeting.
Okay. Well, I think they talked, didn't they, the two ladies from each community to try and figure out how it was gonna work?
I think limited, obviously.
Well, but I mean, they spoke with one another to try and see how they would make it happen. But I didn't get any information after that.
She said in theory it was a good idea, but when it comes down to practice, it's easier. She just, cause there's a lot of, she didn't even know how she would split that up. So it might be easier to reconcile.
So are you saying she agreed to it and recommended it without really want, going all the way through it and making sure it was a good idea? She just said. This sounds like in theory it would be a good idea.
It would work. I'm not sure how much she was consulted on what she was going to be on what was gonna happen.
I mean Lisa.
The R Lisa.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think coming out of that meeting, they both had the same idea of what the group was expecting. So then they were to meet to figure out how they were gonna do this. So in theory, it was supposed to work, okay?
And.
But it's not, yeah.
And then, but, but so, but now that it's practiced. She has more questions, so instead of just leaving things go, she paid the bills.
She took care of it, I mean, mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, I think.
This is this type of stuff that comes out during a trial period when you're trying to join powers.
That's all that's, all that's to work through.
Exactly, exactly, yes, yes, yeah.
But.
I don't know, from my perspective, I think this is something that should've been figured out before we went into a trial period. You start looking at what you're gonna have to pay. Gee, it's gonna be tough to divide up those utility bills, that should've been up yet.
You should've printed this out and figured out the bills.
Well, at least had some kind of an idea of the percentage.
We haven't approved the trial, right?
We never, we never approved the bill paying, correct? They passed a resolution to do a trial period.
We never approved that.
We haven't.
It was, I, I sent it in one of the packets once where it does say there would be an eight-month trial period. It was a resolution the city of Arlington approved last year at some point. But it did not spill out any, spill out any details on how this was gonna happen. It said nothing about the finances.
So it's a downside.
No, but that was the one that we were just, we had just tabled. I, that's the one.
No, no.
No.
Cause that had, that had the finances where it said fifty fifty.
Right, that we never passed with the financial information. Arlington did pass a resolution to go into the trial period.
Yeah.
The trial. No, it was probably in what, August or September?
Mid last year was resolution, yeah, mid last year.
Yeah.
September.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the downside to us continuing to pay these bills and Gaylord just doing payroll?
I think we can, we can reconcile it at the end.
At the end, just add along.
Just reconcile it at the end.
I think that's what we do, yeah.
Here's the resolution that was passed, if you wanna pass that to Joe so he can see, it's pretty, as I say, that one's pretty generic.
As long as they agree. As long as they agree with what we wanna reconcile.
No, I, I.
That was before you came on, I think.
That's why you should bring it up now.
Maybe not, maybe not.
You're talking about it, but I definitely.
I don't know.
Yeah, it, this should've been figured out before.
Shouldn't we get ahold of them in the near future to let them know we have an issue with this?
Well, I know there's a meeting coming up.
On how it's going to be worked out, other than we wait eight months and they say, well, that was your share. I mean, we, we don't know right now.
I mean, according to what I'm reading in the emails, it sounds like that those who are paying the bills want it to stay how it, how they're currently doing it today. Isn't that the gist of it?
Apart from the city's end.
Yeah.
Lisa would prefer to just keep paying the bills, we'll reconcile it at the end.
Keep doing it this way, at the end, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I.
Gaylord does not like that idea.
I, I think. Well, here's the thing, I think what has to be done and what should be done is it be brought back to the J P A, put on an, an, on the agenda for the next meeting. And have these two, these two people from each of the communities, cities come in and say, this just won't work. This is our idea how this would work. It would work if we each did our own bills, Gaylord, you can do the payroll. But we, then we have, you know, everything is together. It can be together very easily. But it's separated and we know, I mean, how are we gonna take care of the pink highlighted things? How are we gonna take care of? And have them bringing, bring it up to that group and have that group say, okay, I got you, I understand, right? And, and I'm sure the group will, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. It doesn't work, okay? Or then let's sit down and figure out how we're gonna.
Well, especially since she already paid some of the bills, cause now you look at it, some of the bills have already been paid by us. You're just muddling this up terribly.
Right.
But moving forward.
Right.
It changes the process now.
But in changing the process now, she already started it.
Moving forward, you could do two different things though. You could probably, sitting in that meeting, they could, the group could come up with a thing and say, okay. Well, maybe it is, you know, a third of those costs for that building and for that building and in Gaylord, maybe it's half of those costs. The ones that are kinda, we don't know exactly where they should, I don't know, I'm just throwing things out there, maybe what they can work through.
Yeah.
No, I, I think I agree that the, the people doing the bills need to come to the J P A and have in, you know, give us. And maybe they can't. Right. Have input. Input on this, but it just, yeah.
To change it mid.
Yeah, change, change it midstream doesn't make sense. But.
So, yeah, so, when you look at it from a whole, I, I guess so, when I think of a joint powers, it's, it's almost. Uh, it's a separate entity in itself and to, to do it and probably have it be really successful, you would need one person. Basically in charge of that and the two communities kinda do this number.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's ultimately what's going to happen if J P A goes through.
Because for me, how does, how does Gaylord not take in part of transporting? How, how do they also opt out of, um, you know, the fire department doesn't respond to assist as well? Um, how, how do they get the full benefit and then yet deal with fifty percent? You know, it's, well, well, yeah, we, we don't really wanna deal with that. Why don't you guys take care of that? Um, and that's maybe an absurd analogy, but, um, for me, you know, if we're gonna split the cost true. Um, it's, it's looking at one entity in the end, and then this is the area that we pull our resources from. And then you basically treat it as a business. However, we staff it, we staff it.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep.
Um, but it's equal, um, the way it's currently being written or currently being proposed, I don't know if it truly is equal. And I don't think I, in the end, could end up supporting that.
Well, what you're talking about now then with paying the bill, I mean, that's more of a process. Well, what you're talking about now then with paying the bill, I mean, that's more of a process, not, nobody's talking about, it was fifty, fifty-fifty accurate or not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we were on the topic, so I had to get it out there.
We're talking about the process, so, yeah, and I understand, I understand where you're coming from, but it's the process.
Right.
Do we continue going forward with the process of Lisa here paying the bills or do we change in the middle of the stream?
By the time we meet on March nineteenth, she'll probably pay some more bills, I just gotta tell you, more bills will have been paid by then, so we're gonna, yeah, they gotta be paid, so she's, we're gonna be into those.
And she'll pay in February, that's right.
They gotta be paid.
Well, I mean, communications then, if that, that's what the ladies in both communities have already stated. But then continue what they're doing, but go to that meeting, that needs to be brought up as a, as a point of this isn't working, right? So have that group take care of it and fix it.
And by that token, by the time that the trial period's over, to Joe's point. You should technically then have one account for MediaCom, Verizon, the utilities, all under that JPA. And have authorized people assigned.
They wouldn't do that.
This is in the lorries of the world assigned to.
No, you're saying if.
Right.
If it were, if it were.
To pay those from that one copper, right?
Yeah.
Right, 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 if the JPA goes forward and becomes official. Right, right.
Right. Right.
Did they even use the same media or utility companies, but I mean, how, how is that divided up?
I'm like.
I mean, so we, whatever we're spending, whatever they're spending is gonna go into some sort of pot, and then we divide it.
Not. Pot.
Well, I mean.
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah, it's very complicated to get it right, um.
It is.
But again, I mean, we're trying it, um.
I don't know, I think all of these things, we gotta have them hammered out really fine detail, black and white. Bring it to the JPA, let's go through it again. Have, have the women doing the bills turn up, let's walk through it, have a plan in place.
I'd like to see them there to discuss.
We should have that done before our trial period is over, hopefully.
To see them.
Oh, yeah.
Work it all through.
But I wouldn't guess that out.
Well, I guess let's, let's be truthful here, the, we knew there'd be bumps in the road during this thing.
Yeah, right.
And it wasn't all gonna be with staffing, it wasn't all gonna be with radio communication, some of it is on right now, what we're talking about now. So we've got some things to work out also.
I guess, you know, if they're covering payment of a lot of things and we're covering payment of some things. In the end, it's gonna be a smaller check in the time period that we would write to them, I'm guessing.
Or vice versa.
Yeah, we don't know, cause we don't know what they're spending, you know, what we're spending.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no, no way of knowing any of that.
Okay, but the, well, it's all managed by the same. Right, it's.
Might be managed by the same, but I doubt they know what we're, what Lisa's writing out for checks every month.
Yeah, I would say as soon as that's been read.
So they still, and we don't know what they're spending per month.
And that goes back to even the point, you know, what, last month when Joe was saying, how am I confident to know that this person's gonna be up on their financials?
They wouldn't be writing my bills, I'll tell you that much.
You're right, you can't, you can't be confident, with no way of knowing, not the way it is right now.
Right. Right. And I wouldn't expect anybody to pay mine as well, I mean, I say that and and. Then that's where it comes to, so say in the end, we say, oh, wow, we had thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of expenses, these are what our expenses are. And they're sidelined, they go, oh, what the heck is all this, we paid all the bills, you owe us this much money. Um, and then it becomes potentially, um.
That's why I think it's gotta be brought up now.
Well, I think that's why we're keeping track as well of all the runs that we're doing and who's doing it and all that other kinda stuff too, right?
Right, high.
Usually, usually, the money you got coming in, you're, you have higher expenses because you have more runs, but then you have more money coming in to pay for those expenses.
Yeah. High, high level, there's revenue being generated from both, correct? If that all goes into one pot.
Right, so it's the lower.
Not if they're not, the, the way I understand it is our main, a, a big part of us making money is, is the transports from the hospital. To say Abbott or another clinic and if those are being lessened from potentially that going to Ridgeview or. The fact that Gaylord is not taking part in that lucrative side of it, it's gonna, it's gonna lessen the, the profitability of it.
You, you're correct and I agree with you a hundred percent, if we're gonna do transfers, we're gonna do transfers, period.
Both, both have to be.
Absolutely, who's ever on duty that, absolutely.
Both.
Cause now we're putting more into the program than they are.
Okay, well, if you're looking at it at sides, I'm saying that as a group, right, no matter who's on call, it's.
All the way around.
But, yeah.
Both parties in the group have to do the work.
Exactly. Doesn't matter who's on call.
You took the.
That's right.
But then it comes down to staffing again because you have to have that, that backup.
And that might be the problem, maybe they don't have the staffing to do that.
That way. And that's why we're trying this, and that, that was the, that was the starting point.
Well, my understanding is that if, if it's not covered, then they typically in the past would have, have already of.
Bob, am I wrong, is Arlington more able to cover long distance transfers during the day than Gaylord? Because Gaylord typically those folks are working and they're not willing or able to take off the amount of time it would require for a long distance transfer?
Yes, that is correct. Their, um. Their day call people, a lot of their shifts are fractured where, you know, they're not on for the full twelve hours. You know, and that is because of where they work, their employer allows them to. You know, take the time off for a nine-one-one call, you know, to go say as far, um. They, we've kinda set a thirty-mile limit, which would be Waconium, you know, Mantado, um, you know, Queen of Peace, you know, those. New Ulm, but anything over that, then when they would get back to work, they would have to make up that lost time. You know, so therefore, you know, that's where they came up with this texting page in system.